We'll call the Finance Committee to order. Okay. And the first item is the resolution having to do with funding, federal funding for Dean's Trail. And Mike's gonna talk about it.
Yep. Good evening. We have an opportunity to apply for a half million dollar grant through RDOT to go towards 3A of Dean's Trail. But the city's required to do a 20% match. So the resolution is basically asking the city to commit to a $100,000 20% match for the $500,000 construction bond or grant.
How much money we have left in our trails?
So I brought Cody with us to answer those questions, but we went over this, James and Cody and I, and there's $7 million in the fund and 3 million of it is accounted for. Is that correct or obligated? Obligated.
That we've approved to match.
Correct.
Tap funds, yeah.
Bottom line is how much?
Yeah.
Yeah, unreserved.
Unreserved is gonna be... To apply for the grant.
Right.
We may not get it, but just to apply.
Okay.
So if you get it, it costs us $100. If you don't, then it costs us anything.
Correct.
Patsy does her job. We'll get it on the tap committee.
Right? I hope so.
Yeah, we've been pretty good at that, pretty good at those. So hopefully y'all will get it.
So if it gets approved, what other obligations would we have to finish it out? Do we have, are we paying for that, the rest of it, the trail?
So there's at least three sources of funding that's went towards that trail and we're still working on completing the plan to pay for the rest of the trail.
I think all we've paid, Mark, and probably all we anticipate paying, I mean, it all depends on what tap money comes our way in the future. But you know, this comes in stages. You do the design, you get tap money for design, you get money for acquisition, you get money for construction. And we've been doing Dean's Trail in phases. And I don't think we've put any money into that except for matching other grants, right?
Is that correct, Cody?
Which with a tap, it's 20%. So can't answer your question exactly, but we haven't, we haven't, it's amazing how much trail we've gotten built with the amount of city money we've actually spent on them.
But if we pass this resolution, we'll be obligating $100,000?
Yes, if the grant is.
Well, we're kinda obligating it anyway.
You're obligating it.
We can't spend it.
Right.
Right.
Until the grant's run out.
Until the grant is either approved or denied.
Right.
Any action on this resolution?
I'll make a motion that we forward it to council with recommendation for approval.
Any further discussion? Okay. Motion to forward to council with recommendation for approval. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hey, Kevin. Any opposed? Same sign. All right, thank you. Second resolution has to do with spending of funds to acquire real estate for the Dean's Trail. And are you also handling this, Mike?
Yes. So Juniper Investments owns that apartment complex on Electric. And there's, we need easements on north side of Electric and the south side of Electric, and they own both of them. On the appraisals, they came out at different amounts per square foot, and they're asking us to make it the same amount. And I've had several conversations with Ernest, and he's educated me on appraisals and how this works. And it's my first go around with this, but he felt it was reasonable that they would have been paid the same because their properties basically are only separated by a road, and they came out with a different square footage amount.
Who did our appraisal?
We, the main appraisal was done by Reed and Associates, but there was a review appraisal done by Stephen Means.
By who?
Stephen Means.
What's, what'd you call it? What kind of appraisal?
A review appraisal is required anytime there's additional funding source. In this case is the DOT. It requires a review appraisal be done.
And that was higher?
No, they were the, they were the same.
They just looked at what Reed did at the time.
This is, if you look at this, it's on, there's a couple of maps here after the resolution in your packet. The first one shows, the black line is the Dean's Trail, but I've included a map with the yellow line on it showing the easements that we're acquiring from Juniper. On the north side of the street, there's apartments. On the south side of the street is a commercial development. So that's, that's the difference in the square footage. They're not requesting any additional compensation for the property on the south side of the street. They're just asking that the property on the north side of the street be appraised the same value as the south side, which is kinda something similar to what we did on the North Fortieth Street project. You may remember, there was a, there was a property owner who owned property on the east side of the road and the west side of the road, and the appraisals came back different, square foot on the east side and the west side. And they offered to settle for, if you'll just pay the same for both, and we did, this is a little different. It would add 78 cents a square foot. And the appraisals were done in 2020, August of 2021, I believe, is when the appraisals were done.
So Reed appraised the north and south sides, different dollars per square foot?
Correct. And they're just asking that they be paid the same, which would be an additional 25,000. And it would save us having to use eminent domain process as well. So that's, that's the counter offer. I've been with the mayor. He thought it was reasonable to bring forward, so that's why it's in front of you.
Do we know how to do eminent domain?
Sometimes.
Well, and they'd be fine with the 2020 appraisal?
I'm sorry?
They'd be fine with the 2020 appraisal?
They're, well, the appraisals were done in August of 2021. And it appraised the property on the south side of Electric at $1.88 a square foot, and the property on the north side of Electric at $1.10 a square foot. And they've agreed to settle for all of what we need for $1.88 a square foot, which is not asking for anything additional, any additional compensation for the property on the south side. They just wanted both sides to be treated the same. Which, as I said, we did something similar on North Fortieth Street.
So the property that we would be looking at buying from the apartments, that's an easement now?
Yes. If you look at pages five, six, and seven, actually, five and six show the easements on the north side. There's a temporary construction easement, which would not increase the compensation on, but there's a trail easement on the north side. And then another trail easement on the north side, and then a trail easement on the south side of the road as well.
But the easement couldn't be used for anything else. It couldn't be another apartment or road or anything?
No, it's a multi-use trail easement, similar to what we've acquired further north on other aspects of this same trail. This is just the next phase going south. They'll take it to, I believe, to Don Tyson Parkway.
Correct, yeah.
This takes it from Highway 412 to Don Tyson Parkway, if I'm correct. This is what this phase is. And we've already acquired, I think this phase, there's seven parcels.
I believe that's correct, yeah.
And this would be, this would take care of two of them.
I move the resolution before it to council with recommendation of approval.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor forwarding counsel with recommendation for approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. All right, thank you. Third item for the Finance Committee is a discussion on the American Rescue Plan Act funds.
I guess that's your mayor. Yeah, I, I had put this on here, and of course, I've had an opportunity to meet with each of you individually to go over that. But we, and we thought we might have, possibly have a resolution, have resolutions ready tonight, but they're not. But basically, this is, this has to do with how we plan to designate especially our lost revenue portion of the American Rescue Plan funds. We got that first tranche last June or July, I think, June. And then we expect the second tranche this June. Of the first 10.6 tranche, I believe 9.2 was designated as lost revenue as we ran through the formulas. We're expecting a similar amount out of this next 10.6. We don't know for sure, but... Right. Oh, is it? Oh, okay. I didn't know that because at first we thought it was gonna be more.
I didn't hear any of this. Can he talk to the microphone, please?
And he wasn't at the mic.
Sorry, Gavin.
Go ahead, Cody.
So yeah, so with the, where we're at so far on the calculations for 2021, it looks like the revenue loss portion, according to how the calculations work, with the guidance from the feds and from municipal league, it will be down from the comparison to 2020.
When will you have that?
We'll have it solidified. Well, we can give you a pretty good rough estimate, probably by tomorrow.
Okay.
An actual dollar amount.
Why don't you give us that? Maybe we can let the council know that at council.
Yeah.
Because I, that differs a little bit from what I told them when I met with them.
Right.
So let us know how much difference that's gonna be. Hopefully, it won't be a whole lot less, but we'll, we'll work on it.
We'll see. 2021 was pretty good.
Yeah, well, yeah, 2021 was real good. Okay, all right, thanks. That's really all I have tonight on that, unless y'all have other questions.
So you're just going to give us that number?
Yeah, we'll give you that number when we, when we get it, so we know what, but we do have some, we do have some possible ways that has been advised that with the Treasury's new rules, how we can, how we can use that lost revenue. As soon as, as soon as Cody and you all can, as soon as y'all can give us the resolutions we need to do that. So do you have a, you have a ballpark?
We just need to do some house cleaning on the resolution that we, the example resolution we received to make it fit with how we do our resolutions and with our accounting process that we do here at the city.
Think there's any chance we'd get that in two, by two weeks, where we could do that at the next committee meeting?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
So just bring it back up to the next committee?
Yeah, that'll work.
That, I'll close the finance.
I'll open health sanitation. And we have a raising and removal of property located at 302 Cottle, including an emergency, and Tom Evers, our chief building inspector, will listen on that.
Thank you. Counsel, mayor, how you doing this evening? You guys wanted an update. The update is this, and he's here to speak on it as well. But Mr. Palos did come in to get a permit on 423, which the only problem was is he's not the property owner. His dad's the property owner. So his dad, we do have to get the permit or they'd hire a contractor. As of this morning, his dad came in and has obtained the permit now. And they are aware that any electrical, mechanical, plumbing, they would have to hire a contractor who's licensed for those entities, and/or if they decided they want to add on to it, they'd have to hire a contractor. So the only update I can tell you is we do, as of today, have a permit. So when did we deal with this before?
April 4th.
April 4th?
Yeah, it's tabled to tonight.
And we were thinking about giving him 60 days, and I think we ended up with 30 days. And we wanted it to be enclosed, correct?
Definitely, definitely secured and closed, but I really don't think, unless he's got something other to tell me, that, I don't, I have not even been in the house. I mean, he did talk to me that maybe some electrical, maybe all the electrical would have to be redone. But to be enclosed, it should be a matter of days now that they should be able to get the few windows that need to be put on there on. I mean, I would let them, if they're ordering windows, put wood up there temporarily. But I mean, getting windows in there shouldn't be a big problem, I don't think, or getting it closed in, so.
Okay. Can, can the owner or the owner sign? Can he let us know what's been done as far as enclosing it? Hello?
Good afternoon. Yeah, my name is Ricardo Palos. Yes, I had ordered the windows at first, got the wrong size. Got, went to Lowe's and just looked for all the sizes. I had the wrong size, so I had to go back. Went to Meeks last week. I pre-ordered all the windows. They should be coming in from 12 to 13 weeks. Should be coming in.
Okay.
13 weeks? Did you say 13 weeks?
12 to 13 weeks for the windows, yes.
Is there temporary boarding up over the windows until?
Not, not at the moment, yes.
Can you do that?
Yes, yes. I could take care of that, yes. Yes, as far as everything else, in the mornings cleaned up.
And like I said before, he has done some cleaning of the property. They did some tree removal. I thought they took down a fence or two that was kinda falling down, but they have worked on some things. And it's, it's not unlikely, it could be 12 weeks for windows with their supply chain problems. But I would let him board up those windows to keep it secured so that law enforcement doesn't have to be bothered with it, and we'll go from there, so.
And Tom, when should we revisit?
You know, nowadays you got a permit not to waste your time or his. I mean, let's just put it out for 90 days or something like that. That, you know, really, in 90 days, he should be 100% done, you know, even if his windows, you know, because those would be in here by then. But 90 days, you know, four months, Mr. Overton can tell you that, four months, you can build a house, you know, so.
Wouldn't we want to be updated in two weeks just to make sure it all is boarded up so the police aren't messing with it, having to go out?
I can do that. I can, I can appear before you again if you want.
To me, you're not wasting my time, but the problem, I think, is it was almost a month ago, and they got the permit today. I mean, let's get moving. Let's get it boarded up, and let's, let's see some progress.
Sure. And I'm, I'm all about progress, and I'm all about giving people a chance. I will say that when he did come in on the 26th, his dad was in Mexico. So Tom, Tom, do you have to have a building per, right here?
Yes, sir.
Do you have to have a building permit to put up boards on your windows?
No, sir.
All right, and that's my point. And I don't remember exactly what we told him a month ago, but I, yeah, I'm pretty sure we said we want to see some progress, and that, so to Mike's point, it was not yesterday that he got the permit. It was on the 26th that he just finally came in to even try to get one, and has not put up any boards.
Right.
Which is what we pretty much, we were expecting, I think, Amelia, was something to make sure that the house was secure.
Right, and I think...
And so I'm very disappointed that nothing happened. So I'm not sure, I'm like Mike. I don't want to wait 90 days and hope he gets something done on the 89th.
I'm not sure that nothing has been done. I think that they've said that there's been some cleanup.
Nothing as far as keeping people out of the house.
I really feel like the boarding up of the windows would be...
Amelia, I'll ask him a question. I'll ask him a direct question because I'm a direct person. Financing's not a problem. You guys have the ability to get this thing fixed?
Board? Yeah, we're working at it, yes.
So financing is somewhat of a problem, putting up two boards?
No, 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 no.
Okay, so financing's not a problem? Well, I think you must have misunderstood us last time because we're not wanting to wait 13 weeks to get windows in. We wanted the house secured. Yeah.
I wanted to come in and make the impression that I had the windows already put up. That was my main goal, to put the windows up and come in with the windows.
Right.
Unfortunately, I didn't get the windows, and I hesitated, I panicked, and I didn't...
So you did order the windows?
Yeah, the windows are already ordered.
And, but, and you received the wrong?
Paid for and everything. They're gonna be delivered when they get here from Meeks, yes.
But the original windows, they were something that was local? You didn't have to order them originally?
It's just the size.
Lowe's, Lowe's is limited on sizes. If it's any kind of an oddball size, they're not gonna carry it. I did mention last month that Lowe's does, they do have windows, but they don't have a large variety of windows.
Right.
I mean, I wouldn't have a problem if you wanted me to work with him, and he could show me receipts that these are paid for, and he shows me that he's, and I can drive by and verify that the windows are secured, and I could let Ernest know, or I'll tell you next two weeks, whatever you want me to do.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, also, I'll have him give me something, and I'll make sure the windows are secured, so.
The next committee meeting, like Jeff's point and everybody's point, we need some progress.
I mean, I definitely like it. I mean, I've said before, I mean, I appreciate the fact that we do these checks and balances to give citizens a chance to fix it, but a little effort, you know, I'll bend over a lot for people with a little effort, so. All right, thank you, counsel.
We have a motion and a second to table. Are there any other questions?
Table to next committee?
Yep.
Yes, table to next committee. All those in favor of tabling to next committee, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. And I will close out health and sanitation.
All right, I'm gonna open up the Fire and Police Committee. We have one item before us. A waiver, a resolution to waive competitive bidding for SCBA compression equipment. And Chief Holt's here, and he's going to talk to us about this resolution.
All right, and I think Kobe is online, so if there's some specific questions, he can help too. But let me start by saying that this project in total was planned for us to be asking for in the next bond issue. And as it turns out, Washington County with their Recovery Act money has purchased for every fire department in Washington County a number of breathing apparatus in proportionate to the population served. And so 6 million total is what Washington County has invested in this project. What that means, though, is that we don't get enough to completely outfit the department. And so we want to make up the difference. That's what we're asking. And so this roughly 225,000 that we're asking will get us what would be, you know, two years from now, over a million dollar purchase that we intended on making then. So we're trying to leverage their generosity and upgrade our equipment that's reaching end of life anyway. And so that's what the ask is. This is a self-contained breathing apparatus. It's the, I fully intended on bringing one to show you and didn't, and so. But it's the harness and the compressed air tank and the mask assembly that our guys wear that allows us to be in atmospheres that are immediately dangerous to life and health. So smoke and hazardous materials and things like that.
What's the life of the self-contained respirator?
There's not necessarily a life, but about 10 years is when we look at. The technology is outdated and needs to be replaced. The bottles have a life. They're 20-year bottles. And we can change them out periodically. What the county is buying and what we will match is 30-year bottles. And so the bottles will be good for longer than the rest of the technology that comes with it.
So we're currently not using these now?
We're using an older version, same manufacturer, but different and less technology. The new ones will allow for us to be accountable. It comes with a software and hardware package that allows our incident commanders to track each pack and identify if someone is low on air or hits their emergency button on their pack. It will tell them who it is. They're assigned individually with an RFID tag that's part of the purchase. So every day, we will be able to scan our tag, each individual to the particular pack that they're wearing. We don't have that capability right now.
And it, do you try to provide so many per vehicle? So be enough, one for every environment? How, how many do you try to have?
Yep, we have, our current inventory is 88, but we have a new fire engine on the way, and that's not accounted for. And so 93 is the number that we need to have available for every assigned...
I'm listening. They're doing the part I was listening for right now. Give me like, give me like 10 minutes.
It's the quietest wrestling match ever. No sound.
Oh, yeah. You showed me that one before.
But they've turned it, because there's not a sound.
So they're assigned to vehicles?
Yes, they're assigned one per riding seat.
Okay, riding seat, okay.
Yep.
And then, so let me make sure I understand, the county is going to buy so many for Springdale, correct?
Correct, that's correct.
And to get up to the 93, is that what you said, 93?
Yes.
You want 225,000 more to get up to that number of 93?
That's 93 packs. That's also masks. The county is providing only 82 masks. We have our individual mask assigned to every member that's across contamination issues.
So it's new masks as well?
Yes.
Okay.
And that'd be different sizes, large, medium, smalls, all that kinda?
Yep.
And how much, did you say it's a, is county providing 750,000?
For Springdale is 683,974.
So basically, these are 45,000 each?
The, the air pack itself is $6,072. The mask with bone mic is $1,265. The...
But we're gonna spend $225 for five additional units.
So, yeah, basically, they, it's...
45.
It's almost $8,000 per setup, yes.
And are you wanting to piggyback on their order, or does that make a difference?
Yes, that, that's why I'm here in kind of on short notice. We have a 90-day from the time the county issued the PO that they will allow us to purchase equipment at the volume discounted rate.
So by piggybacking on with the county, we get a discounted rate?
That's correct. And the, I know it's written in, and if Kobe's on here, he can, he can speak to it. It's, it's written into the resolution to waive competitive bidding. The fact of the matter is, $213,000 worth of this equipment is on HGAC contract by board, so it's pre-bid. We, we don't have to bid that money, that amount. There's another 6,000 in accessories that that manufacturer doesn't provide that we use to identify which vehicle and which person the mask and the bottles are assigned to. That, that's the only equipment that's not pre-bid.
Could we have any more discussion on this item?
Make a motion, move to counsel for approval.
Got a motion and a second to move forward to counsel for recommendation for approval. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
We'll move it forward, and I will close out the Fire and Police Committee.
We'll open up the ordinance committee meeting, and what we have is a discussion about our door-to-door solicitation ordinance since the, since the city attorney chooses not to enforce the one we have on the books.
Well, I think I'm kinda the one that brought it up again. The only reason I brought it up was because, as I mentioned earlier, in my neighborhood, it seems like I have a lot of door-to-door solicitors, which I don't have a sticker.
Um, which I don't have a sticker, you know, which might have helped, but, but, and, um, I get a lot just because I think it's a straight street. The houses are pretty close together. It's an easy neighborhood to, uh, go through. But almost every one of them, I've asked, when they come to the door, I say, well, have you, are you authorized by the city? Do you have a permit by the city to go door-to-door? And, you know, they all just look at me like, whoa, what are you talking about? The only, the best part about that is, is they get out of there real quick, you know? So it kind of works, but obviously I don't think anybody knows that we have that requirement. At first, maybe when we first passed this ordinance, you know, they kind of did because it was in the newspaper and, you know, there was different stuff, different talk, but, but, uh, when I brought it up, that's the reason I brought it up more, more than the sticker issue. You know, I mean, the sticker issue is good too, but, but, but the requirement that they have to be, um, registered to go door-to-door. I don't know if there's any way of enforcing that or not.
The question I have, what's, what's the real, it says the, the violation is, uh, uh, penalties are in section 1, 1.9. What, what are the penalties for that?
That's the, uh, general ordinance violation penalty, which is up to a thousand dollar fine. And it could be up to 500 dollars for each additional day that the violation continues.
I think it'd be important to have that, the, the, that specified, not just referred to, but have that specified in the ord, ordinance so that, uh, uh, these solicitors could be informed that that's what the violations are. Cause right now it calls for them to, a $40 registration fee plus $5 for each, uh, individual solicitor. And they're supposed to have a photo ID, you know, when they come around, but I think we need to have, I, I agree with Jeff. I think we need to, uh, have that, uh, more prominent on our website.
Well, then, um, mayor's office sent out something about what was on our website. And really our website only talks about the sticker.
Yeah, we need, and we charge for that.
Yeah, right. So I, I'm, I'm like, Mike, I wonder if there's something we can do.
I think we could, you know, make people more informed because I've got stickers all, both on my, at my office and at my house, but it doesn't, uh, no one understands. That's what it's about.
Yeah, we can. We can put something out explaining, yeah, the stickers and, and that's good, or, or the, we had stickers or little yard signs.
But the notification that they have to be registered would be good.
I think, I think putting it, putting out that they have to be registered, I think, you know, I, I don't know that any, any, uh, any of the, the people who are violating that will necessarily see it. Some of them might, but I, but it'll at least give a lot more residents the idea to question people who come to their door, just like Jeff has.
And, and I think it'd make residents feel a little more comfortable to know specifically there are some
Right.
some financial penalties for violating our, our ordinance rather than just shrug it off. So I, I think that'd be good, again, just to.
We can do that.
Just to spell it out within the ordinance.
Can we, um, can we put on there like what is acceptable and what is not acceptable?
It's within the ordinance now.
Can, can we, like if somebody is looking to obtain a permit or whatever, um, to solicit, how do they know that they need to do that? Like if I?
Who's exempt?
Who's exempt?
Well, yeah, it was schools. I, I hadn't looked at it again, but as I recall, it was.
Charitable activities.
Church thing, yeah, charitable activities, schools, churches.
I just thought if, as a resident, if I'm going to the website to look for information, I would want to know, am I exempt or, or not?
Yeah.
So that might be something to add.
Right.
To that, at least it would cut down some of the phone calls or whatever, um, in the office.
Okay.
I don't know how much the city clerk has, because they, they issue these permits and I know they have other types of, on their website, other types of information about other permits, but I don't know what they have about this. But we can certainly add the penalty language, spell it out instead of just making reference.
Cause we do. It does make reference to about, uh, religious and charitable activities, et cetera, which are pretty well defined, you know, in the.
I, I will tell you, it's very rare that a citation gets issued for this normally because like, I think Jeff said, somebody calls the police, by the time the police get there, they're long gone.
Mm-hmm.
So the last one we had, somebody was going door-to-door trying to sell scuba lessons was the last one I remember, but they got him, but.
Well, we had a lot of roofers, we had a lot of roofers in town, I know, when the tornado went through and.
Yeah.
I'd say if you don't have a sticker, get a sticker.
And we, we charge for the sticker or we give the sticker?
Five dollars.
No, I think it's. Uh, I think the stickers were free, Mike, but we had the signs kind of like the.
Oh, I thought it, I thought I read it was the stickers were actually charged.
No, I think the, I think the signs we charged for.
Initially, we didn't charge for stickers at all.
No, we don't charge for the stickers, but it's the city's cost for the sign.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, which was four or five bucks, yeah. And there are those signs like you'd see for, uh.
Yard repair, or spraying your yard and stuff that go down.
Yeah, or, or a security system.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm, I'm like you. I've got a sticker and they still knock them, they still lock my door down. I just point to the sticker.
Yeah.
Now the solicitor has to pay for the permit.
Yeah.
Yes.
And has to pay for the, for their employees with the, and they, they have to have the, supposed to have the picture ID on them.
So the only change really to the ordinance that's been proposed is adding the language of the penalty.
Specif, yeah, specified.
Specific amounts of the penalty.
Yeah.
Well, so the current penalty is up to a thousand dollars. Like, I doubt we would ever find somebody for that, but that just seems a little egregious to me. Um, find somebody a thousand, a thousand dollars.
Well, it's just, that's the possible penalty, right, for any ordinance violation is, it's spelled out. And actually, if, if it's a, one that's bad enough, it, it can be that the, the judge can order it or declare it a nuisance to be baited, abated immediately punishable by contempt, which is kind of a last ditch effort, but which we've used before, not for this, but for other types of ordinance violations.
But since, since we're changing some language, and I'm sorry, like. There's a, there's a delay on my part. I don't mean to, um, since we're changing some of the language, and again, I'm not, it's, it, it's a thousand dollars, but, and again, I don't, I don't foresee anyone ever getting charged that, but the, the, the fact of the matter is a little, a little too much for something so minor.
It's up to a thousand and that's what all minor violations use the same ordinance. Like parking on the grass uses the same, doesn't it, Ernest?
It does, and, and there are instances where we have to give someone a thousand reasons not to do it again.
Yeah, and I, I guess just to be clear, I'm not saying every instance should not be up to a thousand dollars. I just think this one's, I don't know, the, the bothering Jeff Watson in the evening, I don't, I don't think entails a thousand dollars.
Well, I just like people follow the rules.
Yeah.
We, we have several ordinances where it makes reference to that section 1-9. It just says it's punishable provisions of section 1-9. It's kind of a, I don't want to say a catch-all, but, but, and that's set by state law as well, but it says what the maximum can be. So we don't, it's, it's very rare that we ever find, actually, we don't like to cite anyone for an ordinance violation. We'd rather have compliance because we don't, we don't do any good citing or finding someone if they don't comply with the ordinance. But sometimes there are some people in certain instances that are charged with the ordinance violations that need, you know, 500 or a thousand reasons to stop doing what they're doing.
I think the mayor's right. We're not going to be able to, or all of the solicitors are not going to see this and follow it. Um, is there any reason for us to do any kind of other marketing, um, to, to POAs or something where we can get that message out to the residents who can explain that to people when they do approach their door? If they want to ask for, you know, I don't know. I was just thinking outside the box.
If we could put it, if we get it on Facebook, you know, there's, there's a few POAs.
I think the most effective thing will be, will be the residents knowing, reminding the residents that we have this rule and, and they'll stop it themselves when people come to their door. Are the, but when Amelia mentioned POAs, that brought up a question in my mind. Ernest, do we have, do we have, is that a eligible uh, item for a POA to outlaw door-to-door? Can they do that?
Something I give legal advice on.
Oh, you don't give legal advice on?
I know my neighborhood has a sign that says, "Keep out on, on the entrance."
Yeah, we don't enforce.
Right, no, we don't enforce those. I just, I just wondered if there were POAs that, that do that. And it sounds like there are.
Well, I doubt it because the PO, the restrictions on a POA is on the property owner, not, not the people coming into the neighborhood.
Yeah, true.
Okay.
It's kind of like allowing someone, when you're walking the dog to use the bathroom in somebody's yard. I mean, I don't see it kind of the same way.
See, I, I know there are POAs, or there are, there are neighborhoods that that, uh, don't allow political signs in their yards.
Property.
Yeah, it, it is. I know it's different, but I, I was just, I'm surprised they can do that. Because of the political speech, I'm kind of surprised POAs can even do that, but I guess they can.
If anybody's looking for a Christmas idea for Jeff, I think we've figured it out.
Yeah, and, and that's the only reason I brought it up was just kind of remind everyone that we have that ordinance.
I can, I can bring that back.
You'll be surprised how quickly the word will spread once it goes to some of these, uh, POA social media.
I will say, I mean, with, Chief Campbell can probably address this too, like seriously, when, most times when they get a call, by the time the officers get there, they're long gone. So.
Yep, that's definitely true.
Alright.
There's nothing further. The ordinance committee is closed.
That's it.
Thanks.